And it's all chips rise.
It's called the Queen of the Air Trail. But it's awesome. It's three miles, three or four miles long. And you go up, it's right before the Merritt. You make a right-hand turn and that's where the baseball fields are. That's where it starts. Then you can park over there, or if you go the other side, where Meals Donuts are. That's the best way. There's a parking.
All right, guys, we started up. Oh, wait, do we?
I didn't see it. I didn't see it go dark yet, though.
Call to order, Town North Branford Water Pollution Control Authority and Regular Town Council Meeting, North Branford, Connecticut, Tuesday, December 6th, 2022, at 7:21 PM. We will start with salute to the flag, please. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, liberating, just as for all. Thanks, everyone, for joining us tonight. Apologies about the delay in getting the show started. We had a spirited conversation about our proprietor this, for those who weren't here. All right, we'll start with the roll call, please. Present. Here.
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 And Council Puccio.
Here.
All right, accept. Item two, minutes of the previous meetings, November 15th, 2022, Special WPCA and Regular Town Council Special Meeting, accept.
So move with a one correction of 13B. The motion was to approve the plaque for the new North Branford High School.
Second. We got a motion.
You have that.
All right, motion by Council Diamond, seconded by Deputy Mayor Zampano. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained? Okay, thank you. All right, on to the Water Pollution Control Authority Agenda. Item three, correspondence, citizen statements. Are there any? No. How are you, sir?
Hi. Nope, not the.
Oh, I thought you were coming up for a, getting a. Yeah, you were ahead of the game. Very, very good.
Trying to make up time.
Yeah, seriously. Item four, unfinished business. Seeing none. On to item five, new business, request to connect sanitary sewers, 50 Caputo Road, map 30, lot 15-1. Victor, sir.
Good evening. Here tonight to represent the proposed connection at 50 Caputo Road. We had a request from a buyer, buyer's realtor for the property to connect the property. It's currently a vacant parcel with the ability to support a single residential dwelling on the property. Our connection fee that we require is $12,300. I did verify that there's capacity in the system. It's only a single-family lot to add to the system. The, there's not currently an existing lateral along this section of the sewer main. When the sewer main was put into this portion of Caputo Road, if I'm saying that, hopefully I'm saying that right. I've heard it said a couple of different ways, but Caputo, Caputo. The lot that was there was in a larger configuration. It was split since then to support this, this additional single-family lot, and that's it. We have a suggested motion in front of you for you to consider, and it's the typical write-up that we include, follow the rules and regulations of our sewer regulations, the connection fee, the town engineer with the ability to review the connection plans for construction when they apply for the sewer connection permit, and the town attorney and the town manager given the ability to review an agreement and then sign off on that agreement in the process after we go through this, this approval process with your commission.
I'd like to make, to move the suggested motion in our packet. It's on page 13 of, in our iPad. I'm not going to read the whole thing, but it's going to go ahead. I'm making the motion as suggested.
Second. All right, motioned by Council Angeloni, seconded by Deputy Mayor Zampano. Any discussion? Seeing none, none will move the vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstained? That shall pass, thank you. All right, on to item B, Blue Jay Drive Broken Sewer Main Line.
All right, I typed this too small. Do you need my glasses for this one? Sorry.
We won't judge you.
So for, so for Blue Jay Drive, I was, we were kind of thrown a curveball the day before Thanksgiving on November 23rd during a regular TV video inspection by our sewer maintenance company, Beolia. They discovered a break in a portion of that sewer main on Blue Jay Drive. It's pretty much the northern end of town on that system that feeds into North Haven. The sewer main in that area where the break is, is approximately 16 feet deep under the road surface. That, that is a deep sewer main, if you're wondering. It's pretty deep. The break was significant enough to justify moving forward with an emergency capital expenditure, make the necessary repairs. The town obtained three quotes from three capable companies to complete that type of repair at that depth. The lowest price came in at $30,000 for repairing up to 30 linear feet of sewer main. We're estimating, it was up, we were unable to really determine how long the break is, but we're estimating that it's a 10 to 15-foot-long break. During this process and the, or since the 23rd, we've provided a, an informational brochure to the residents on Blue Jay Drive to let them know of the imminent repair. And I also worked with Deputy Chief Lovelace, who was instrumental in coordinating with the school system to make sure that we have bus service or maintain bus service to that area because the, we're going to close down a small section of that road, but it was enough to make where that coordination with the schools had to be made. Public Works is going to be providing us with a complete signed package for a detour and barricades to, you know, on either side of that road closure. The access to Blue Jay Drive for the residents and emergency personnel will still be basically unimpeded. This section that we're anticipating to close down is between two existing driveways, so we still have access to the other end of Blue Jay Drive over Skylark Drive. So I'm hoping that I've, as my, one of my previous bosses would always tell me, the devil's in the details. I'm sure you've heard of that before. So again, with Chief, Deputy Chief Lovelace's help, I was able to at least, that was one of the items I kind of overlooked. So he helped me out, get through the scheduling of the buses with the schools. The contractor is planning on mobilizing equipment. They were supposed to mobilize equipment already, but had some scheduling and weather conflict. So planning on mobilizing equipment tomorrow. There may be equipment mobilized there by, by the end of today. I didn't get a chance to check. And hopefully, starting the work Thursday with an anticipated two-to-three-day work schedule to complete the work. And again, we always have to throw them with weather dependent on that. So hoping by the end of the week, we are able to bring this to a close.
Okay. Is there a motion?
No.
I don't think there's a motion. It was more of an informational, if there's any questions.
I have, I have a question. What's, if there is a break, are these people able to use their, like?
The, the system, the system is currently functioning, so the, the break was explained to me that it's a, I mean, we're talking about, is it, what's the difference? Is it just a cracked pipe and we have some material leaking into it? No, this was a situation where, and this was one of the reasons why we, we acted at least rather quickly. I wish we could have acted a little quicker because I feel like, you know, every day we're kind of risking a possible worse scenario here. If this, if the system does start to back up, we have over, I think, 20 houses upstream of this location, and if we start getting backups into houses, it becomes another liability factor altogether. But trying to avoid that. So the break was explained to me that it's a complete roof collapse, so we're basically, top of the pipe is no longer there and it's exposed to the, the subgrade, the material, dirt material above that, and 16 feet of material above that. So it's kind of one of these scenarios where the, I don't know how long, but the fire started, the wick is lit and we can.
Right, we're waiting for it to go.
You know, the wick could be a mile long or it could be another 10 feet long. I don't know. So, you know, I'd rather get the repair done and not risk, you know, additional problems.
Grab your situation.
Yeah, right?
I just have, I just have a statement.
Sure.
You know, we sit up here talking about bringing businesses into North Branford and patronizing our businesses, and I noticed in the package that Cherry Hill Construction Company, which is right here at Siro Road, they were only $500 more. They were $30,500. And I'm sure they have property they pay taxes on, their equipment they pay taxes on, probably even have residents in North Branford and Norfolk who work for them. And I just, how do I promote bringing businesses into North Branford when you go out and retain somebody out of East Haven? And I looked up both of these companies on the internet, and they're both five-star ratings. So.
Why do we choose one versus the other?
Why do we choose somebody from East Haven when we have somebody right here in North Branford?
So it's not, in this scenario, it wasn't really a bid, but I did kind of try to go out of my way with, you know, the, it felt like the limited time that I had. Again, this happened, or I was made aware of it the day before Thanksgiving, and we kind of worked through the weekend to kind of figure out, well, you know, what are the companies that can do this type of work? And then we did request, make some requests to additional companies that are capable of doing this work, but coming towards the end of their season and their, their schedules, they weren't able to accommodate us under the short, such as short.
Well, Cherry Hill wasn't able to accommodate you? Is that what you're saying?
No, Cherry, Cherry Hill. So Cherry Hill was, that's why they're one of the three that, that were able to give us quotes on the work. But I guess I'd just point out that, so the bids aren't quite, or the bids, the quotes aren't quite apples-to-apples. The one difference that, and I kind of hinged on feeling more comfortable going with the low quote, was that, so I'm trying to get my names, the names right here. So Quality Associates was, was in their quote, put in to repair up to 30 linear feet of pipe. So until we get down there, 16 feet, I don't know what we're going to encounter. So I have up to a 30 linear foot pipe repair package with them, under their quote. The Cherry Hill quote, I think, and you're probably, you're looking right at it, I think they only covered 10 to 15 linear feet of pipe repair, which is. It was 15? Yeah. So they only covered 15 feet. So I feel like, you know, even though it looks like it's only $500 difference, we're getting a potential larger section of pipe repaired if we, if we, you know, find additional, find a bigger problem when we get down that deep. So that's kind of how, you know, it was only $500, but I think we're getting more for our money potentially if we hit additional problems down there.
Franny.
We use Cherry Hill quite often for work now, just so you know. A lot.
Thank you, Franny.
Okay, thank you. And, and thank you, Hector. I appreciate it. All right, on to item six, citizen statements and petitions. Any? Okay, seeing none, we're going to move on to the regularly scheduled Town Council meeting. Seven, item seven, reports, commissions, boards and commissions, reports of committees, boards and commissions, I'm sorry. Item A, Economic Development Commission?
Economic Development Commission, they did have a meeting last night, unfortunately due to work performed, and I wasn't able to make it.
Get an update on next meeting from that?
Yeah.
Thank you, sir. All right, item B, Parks and Recreation?
Their meeting is next week.
Okay, thank you. Item C, Police Commission?
Meeting is next Monday, December 12.
Thank you. Item D, Fire Commission?
I was unable to attend the, the meeting. I do have a quick update, though, on the, the new aerial truck. They received drawings on it. They're reviewing the drawings. They're also looking at making a $600,000 prepayment on the truck, which was all part of the original proposal. And the company now is offering us a $15,000 credit for doing so. So that will help us with some of the, the small add-ons that the fire department needs on the, on the vehicle as well. But just wanted to bring everybody up to date that it is moving forward, and they're doing what they need to do. And as soon as that gets finalized and, and, you know, they, they put the final order in or, you know, approve the final drawings on it, I'll keep everybody up to date on that.
Thank you, sir. Okay. Item B, Planning and Zoning Commission?
Next meeting, Thursday, December 8.
Thank you. Item F, Finance Subcommittee?
Who is?
First. Finance Subcommittee?
F Finance Subcommittee is meeting next week.
Thank you. Item G, Public Safety Communi-, no, can't see, sorry. Public Safety Communications Subcommittee?
Yes, the radio towers are moving along. Tilcon Tower has been constructed. They're moving utilities in and Frontier's moving in there. The Northford Tower, they've started cleaning the site and they're preparing to pour a concrete pad. So it's, both are moving along. Hopefully by the end of March, the two towers will be up and working. The radio system consultant is working with the first responders to develop the configuration of various radios, and 125 pages have just been purchased for the fire department.
Thank you very much. And item H, CIWWA?
Okay, they had two approvals. They approved an application of a detached barn with standard conditions, and they approved construction of a new front porch and rear addition and deck within 100 feet of, of watercourses. What I'm learning is if something's within 100 feet of a water course or wetlands, then that's why it comes to the inland wetlands. They're also working as a committee with the town attorney on some violations, and there's a special meeting tomorrow night to appoint a temporary wetlands enforcement agent.
Thank you very much. Item eight, Town Manager Report. Mr. Downs?
Mr. Mayor, Town Council, good evening. I'll try to be brief because I know we're trying to catch up on time here. But it's holiday season here in North Branford, so I want to note that the tractor outside Town Hall that you all saw coming in with the hay bales and pumpkins for fall is now decorated with Christmas lights, and the tractor is, of course, courtesy of Cliff Potter, and we thank him for that. We had a very well-attended holiday tree lighting event last Friday, December 2nd. Saw a number of you there, featuring performances and singing their carols, an ice sculptor, petting zoo, hayrides, refreshments, among other things. And I want to thank our Parks and Rec staff volunteers, as well as the town residents who came out and made it a wonderful success. And the event passed the ultimate test out of my six-year-old son, who had a great time. Park Rec is also sponsoring the Flashlight Candy Cane Hunt at Northford Park on December 15th, and this is, online registration for that event is continuing through December 9th. The cost is $5 a child with $2 sibling discount for those bringing multiple entrants. Park Rec is also sponsoring the Light Up North Branford Holiday Decorating Contest, which will be held December 20th from 6 o'clock to 10 PM. So if you're channeling, you're in, or Clark Griswold, you can register online with Parks and Recs, and you'll get a map of the houses that you should visit, and the map will be online on the 20th. The Town Employee Christmas Party is being held at the Mill Pond Gathering. Should be a great event. We're proud to sponsor and support a local business with it. It will be held on Wednesday, the 14th of December, 2:30 PM. Town Hall will close earlier that day to accommodate it, and it will be publicly noticed. Also, following on the heels of the successful Halloween decorating contest among town employees, there will be a Town Employee Holiday Door Decorating Contest with departments competing against one another while making our offices merry and bright. Awards will be given for most festive, funniest, and most beautiful, and I want to thank our celebrity Town Council judges for this event, Mayor Jeff McMillan and Deputy Mayor, excuse me, Deputy Mayor Tom Zampano, who will evaluate the work and render judgment on Friday, December 23rd. That concludes my report for upcoming holiday events. What's the, you're going to have a, you should, you guys should check in with Counselor Diamond. They actually had a really working rubric. It was pretty impressive.
Of which they will use, you will cross out Halloween. We will put on their holiday door. Yes.
I want to remind.
There's other exciting developments from that as well.
I want to remind residents that curbside leaf pickup continues through December 10th, so leaves that need to be placed in a biodegradable paper bag curbside on your scheduled pickup date through December 10th. United Illuminating has launched a new municipal access dashboard for local officials to be able to view outage activity in real time with greater detail than is publicly available as a resource. So this should assist us during any future storm or outage events in the future. I trained online with UI on the new dashboard tool along with Chief and Deputy Chief of Police, our Acting Fire Chief and Public Works Director. There's nothing new to report on the website. We're awaiting a draft iteration from Civic Plus and remain on track for springtime deployment for that. In Staff News, I'm pleased to report that I've made an offer to a new candidate for the position of Town Planner and Zoning Administrator, and it has been accepted. So I expect to have this before the council on your December 20th meeting for confirmation of that appointment. This concludes my general updates.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate that.
I'll email that to you so you can, yes.
On to item B, Permanent Project Building Committee.
Thank you. Stanley T. Williams Community Center, the roof replacement bid is scheduled to open on December 14th, 2022. The North Branford Police Department project, the contractor is working with the architect to review various submittals, and the clerk of the works is now on board, and we'll start looking at an early January start to the actual work. North Branford Intermediate School, drawings are being presented to the Town Council for approval, and the building signage requires Town Council input. And North Branford High School, the rooftop units are further delayed, and it appears the move will not be until mid-February. This is probably not a surprise to any of us. And the Phase One Punch list items are being worked through at this time as well. That concludes my report on Permanent Project Building Committee, but I believe we have, I believe, Mr. Blomo, did you want to come up and speak on behalf of the, with, relative to the signage issue?
Oh. Dave Blomo, Department of Projects. So there is, I was briefly at the school today. We had our meeting last night. Couple issues. The sign, the illuminated sign that's on the intermediate school, we're taking down. Obviously, it's backwards, as you all know.
Actually, the Board of Education is supposed to take that down because that was put up without council's approval.
Correct.
And when we started this whole project, that was one of the conditions.
Well, so we can talk about that as, as, I don't know if they're going to, but we're going to have it come down.
Essentially, we're no longer Branford North.
So, you know, the question came up last night, and it's certainly the governing body's decision, you know, do we want to put another sign because we have to instruct Rusty to design something, come up with something? Do we want to put something back up there? And that's something that you guys need to kind of decide and give us direction on, right?
Well, the name is on the school, isn't it, in the big letters?
Yeah, yeah. But the insignia, the NB, I don't know if that's, you know, right now that's coming down and staying down.
Okay.
So, other than that, you know, we, I was there today to, to evaluate the parking, the paving that we're going to be doing behind the auditorium, where the generator is, there's a small area we have to pave, and then in between the auditorium and the new school, there's a section that we're paving. That's only binder. We are not going to pave, over the last couple of weeks, we, myself, Al, Franny has been on the site, and I was not comfortable with the material that the contractor used for the road base that is the new road behind the school, where the buses are going to be going. So we're waiting on, on Whitestone to give us an evaluation and testing and some other odds and ends, but we're not going to pave, we're not going to binder that this year. It's going to be stay as gravel. We worked with.
The material, I'm sorry to interrupt, the material, meaning not the binder, but you're talking about the crush that we used.
Yeah, there's a, there was a, two six-inch lifts of three-inch minus and an inch and a quarter, which was not suitable, in my opinion. They had did some testing. The roadway had failed. The pile that was on the site passed, then the pile passed, the road didn't. We had made some discussions and talked to Gil Bain about taking the material out. So we're in the process of still dealing with that, but we're not going to bind it, I'm afraid. And Franny and myself and Al have been out there numerous times. I'm not comfortable with it.
So it will not be?
We will not binder the roadway. They'll just stay as gravel for this year. It'll be compacted unless we take it out, but we won't bind it. We're only going to pave, behind the auditorium, there's a strip there, and in between the auditorium and the new school, there's a section we're paving Thursday.
That section's being used for teachers and staff?
Which one?
Auditorium?
The, the part that we're not keeping, that we're not going to bind?
That's going to be the bus entrance.
Gotcha.
The bus entrance, right. The rest of the lots, all bindered. If you've probably, most of you have probably been in and out of there. The rest of the lot is bindered. We decided not to put top coat on until next year to look, projects completed. This way we won't have any seams, we won't have any issues. If there's any imperfections, we can correct them next year. We are doing a walkthrough next week, so we'll have another update for you. But today, just ran through the building, third floor, about 90% done. Millworks in, flooring's in, they have some painting, some touch-up, some ceiling grids to put in still, science labs, desks and that kind of stuff waiting to come in. There is another load of glass coming in. They are probably 90% done with glass. They've had some struggles with glasswork. There are some, some areas that glass still has to be finished. Second floor, obviously, much less done, probably half done. First floor, they have a lot to do. Their targeted date to move in is the week of the 20th to the 23rd, that week, that there's some half-days. And then I think they're looking to take a couple of extra days, providing we get rooftop units, mechanicals, and that kind of stuff. So there's, there is some concerns. I mean, I was there today. I said, you guys got, you know, eight or 10 weeks, and, and I just, I'm not sure.
Any issues with the conditioning? You're getting, being that they're still waiting in class?
They're still waiting in class.
You get what I'm saying? Any issues with getting it?
Oh, no, no, they got another load coming in, I think, next week, he said. So the glass doors, entrances, those will be in in January, early January, he said, the first week, or 7th or 9th, he said to me today, barring that there's no other issues.
I meant the balance of, it has to balance out, the system.
Oh, well, they'll, if we get all the rooftop units in, yes, they will. But it's going to be a challenge to flush and balance the systems, yeah. It will be.
The areas that the millwork's going in and the painting and all that stuff, those are all sealed areas?
Far as.
Far as windows?
Yes, oh, yeah. Those rooms are all done on the third floor.
So they don't have another incident?
Yeah, no, those are, and anything that is not sealed with, with glass has got protection. So, you know, the kitchen equipment is in, delivered, it's not placed. The epoxy floor was done a week or two ago. So, you know, they're moving along. It's, it's coming along. We will have probably a pretty extensive punch list when we get to that point. There's, you know, a few things that we saw today that we wanted to correct. Gil Bain has been, been much better lately with us, and certainly with Rusty's help, and the team as a whole. Every one of us has, has got some input on it, so it's, it's going well overall. So we'll, yeah, we'll do a walkthrough next, next week. I think we're doing a walkthrough. So for your next meeting, we'll have a, a really good update as to where we stand and where we're at with train and the units coming in for the rooftops. I don't think there's anything else, other than I invited Rusty tonight to give you an update of where we're at with intermediate school. We spent last Monday pretty extensively going over the plans for the intermediate school and everything there, and I'd certainly like Rusty to come up and go over that with you for our ad alternates and some allowances that we'd like to add in to make sure that, you know, we're covered with where we want to be on some structural steel, flashing, some additional brickwork, correct, Rusty? If needed. I'm sorry?
I think you had noted the sidewalk repairs.
So we want to, that's going to be an ad alternate. We want to finish the sidewalk from the new sidewalk at the auditorium to the entrance of the intermediate school when we do that. That'll be an ad alternate because we do have some issues with the sidewalk, and certainly the, the beauty of the buildings, you know, when you pull in is there. We do have some issues with that sidewalk, and I think it would probably be foolish if we don't do it, or at least do an ad alternate to try to get it done. Sidewalks are, are pristine now, and certainly I think we should look at doing those as well. Other than that, with the high school, I, as soon as we have some confirmation, which probably be next time we meet, we'll have some idea about the roadway as well. Other than that, Al, is there anything else? Okay, Rusty, you want to give, give the council an update as to what we went over last night? Then, Rusty, you want to give the Council an update as to what we went over last night?
And the price is half the price.
(laughing).
It's coming down. So, good evening. Our drawings are mostly complete, but we've just added some scope in the meeting last night, and so we're going to be developing some additional drawings for the sidewalk repair and replacement. But overall, you know, we've seen the last time we did the budget, it was about six, eight months ago. There has been a slight increase in the budget, but just to be on the conservative side, we're also, you know, we created a number of alternates. So, our base bid is an EPDM roof, a membrane roof, with a 20-year warranty. That's what the state looks for. Our first alternate is to go to a 25-year warranty roof. So, there's just a few things that the contractor has to do, but we get a 25-year warranty on the roof. So, that's something we're doing. Signage was an alternate. Now, it was an... The reason it was an alternate is because we weren't sure what you were going to do with that major sign. If we're not going to do anything, we're just going to remove it and leave it off. We might just opt not to do it as a sign, because your base signs, all the signs are coming off, and they're going to match the high school signage, the fonts and so on. So, we'll just make that base bid if the logo or the sign, that archer sign, is not going back on the building. We do have, you know, an alternate for masonry work. If you recall, the wall at the main entrance to the intermediate school is a metal panel wall, which is in poor shape. It's been banged up. So, one of the alternates is to replace that with a masonry wall. The other alternate is some of the window trim. We have identified a certain amount of window trim, but every time we go back, some more window trim is missing, or it's coming apart. So, we're going to go through and have that reviewed overall as an alternate project. The metal roof that you requested is an alternate, so that is part of the set of drawings that we've put together. The committee also requested that we provide a PVC roof. So, the PVC roof will be a 25-year roof. It's a different, you know, PVC material, which is what the roof on the... Some of the roof at the high school is. It's a slightly more durable material as opposed to the EPDM roof. Both would still give you the same warranty, but it's easy enough to provide specifications for that. You don't have to redo all our drawings. We just have to add some specifications, and that'll give you an alternate, an opportunity if the bids are within your budget, you know, to potentially go from an EPDM roof to a PVC roof.
The PVC roof is just a... I believe, and Al could certainly reiterate, it's a better roof, cleaner roof, easier, you know, to deal with, less issues potentially down the road, people working up there with problems. So, correct, Rusty?
Right. And finally, yesterday, excuse me, the committee added the sidewalks, and we're going to do that work, but bid it as an alternate as well. So, that'll be the final alternate on the project. We're also carrying what we call unit prices and allowances. And the reason we do that, if we have a unit price, we also want an allowance, so we balance the two for bidding purposes. But throughall flashing, we like to have, you know, if we encounter a situation where we need... When we open up a wall, we discover that the flashing is not appropriately installed, we've got a linear foot of throughall flashing allowance. We will also continue to have a sidewalk allowance and square foot in terms of unit price. We were going to do that anyway, because there were sections of the sidewalk that we were going to replace under the base bit scenario, especially where the sidewalk was heating and impeding the doors from opening in the winter sometimes. So, at those locations, we were going to replace the sidewalk, and we were carrying an allowance and a unit price for that. We always carry a deck replacement allowance, because we don't know when we open up to take the roof off, what the condition of the existing deck is going to be. You know, hopefully, it'll be fine, and we don't have to exercise the allowance, but just in case, it's better to have that unit price and allowance in the base bid rather than look at it as a change order later on. We're also anticipating potential brick, you know, removal of some additional brick if it's determined that it's not in good shape. And mainly because when we start this process, the first thing that will happen for the brick is that they're going to come and power wash the entire building. There's two reasons to do that. One, we'll get a better feel for what the condition of the grout is. And secondly, we're replacing, and we're adding a parapet around the building, so we're replacing and adding brick to the building, which means that we've got to be very careful in terms of our selection to match the brick. So, this, by cleaning it, at least we'll get a better feel for what the existing brick will look like. It'll never be exactly the same. We'll obviously look at multiple samples, but ultimately, we'll have to pick one that we feel is the closest. What will happen over time, you know, as time goes by and pollution, et cetera, the bricks, whether it'll blend, it'll blend in, but there'll be some time before that happens. So, we do have a brick...
Are you going to... There's also Rusty about, if you might have mentioned, or maybe on the list about the savings I'm talking about.
Right.
On the backside of both of them.
So, the back of the building, which is really where the original building is, that did not have the raked joints, and lo and behold, it's in really good shape.
Ooh!
So...
Interesting.
So, whereas we've...
Is this good news?
We said last night.
So, we're modifying our design to say, after the power wash, we'll evaluate that portion of the building, because we don't know what the grout is, how the grout is going to react after the power washing, because it is the oldest part of the building. But we expect it to be in much better shape, and therefore, we may not have to re-point that section, which would be a savings to the project. So, that is one other piece that we're going to...
It's a plus.
So...
We'll take any pluses we can get.
Yeah, that's what we said last night.
This is regard to the sign that you're going to take down on the facade.
Yep.
What about the discoloration? It's almost like tanning. So, we're going to have a NB or BA, or whatever the sign is. We're going to have an image, because it's been up there for a long time.
No, just a few years. It wasn't up there from the beginning.
It hasn't been there from the beginning, right.
Yeah, it's only been a couple of years.
Yeah.
And once the building's chemically washed and...
We'll take care of that? Because that's going to kind of be...
We're probably going to be replacing some brick in there, depending on how it's been anchored, so we'll evaluate that once the sign is done and we power wash. If it's a major problem, we're carrying allowances for those types of situations, where if we have to, we can apply the allowances.
We're not putting a... If we don't put a sign back up, are you going to repair where the anchors are, or just...
That loose brick will be repaired.
Knowing this, the way we do it, commanders.
Just asking.
We didn't approve that sign.
It really picked one through.
And we did increase our contingency and escalation values, so that the budget now reflects all of those items.
Thank you. Okay.
All right. So, when is it going out to bid?
We want to get it out...
By January.
Yeah, first part of January, we want it out.
With a spring to start, so... I mean, I know it's a long project.
Right. So, part of what we're working on is how to exactly schedule it, because we want to start that power washing. We need to really work out when we can access the building, you know, potentially before the summer to do the power washing and to get some of that work done, because overall, the extent of work that needs to be done is going to extend beyond the summer.
Right.
So, we may have to phase it. We have to look at some of those details, and we're working on that right now.
Okay.
If we can get a jump on cleaning the facility, you know, the brick, at least when summer hits.
Any thought on those floor-to-ceiling windows? Any changes to that, adding brick, or that thing on the side?
That was just...
Never... Yeah, I was going to say, it's never was talked about, other than that you guys certainly want to.
No.
No.
Unfortunately.
I mean, I would rather see us than the way on the roof and do the...
Right.
The way we're supposed to, and bring the campus together as one school, and fix the problems that we have.
Correct.
Because it's been a problem since day one.
Yeah.
As you recall, we were replacing two large sections of brick entirely, so that's in the documents, and, of course, the parapet all the way around the building will be... It's going to be new brick.
Right. Okay. Well, thank you very much for the report. We appreciate it tremendously. Thank you for your diligence, as always.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, on to Item Nine, Community Events and Presentations. Do we have any? None? Seeing none, move on to Item Ten, Citizen Statements, Petitions, and Correspondence. Do we have any citizen statements? How are you, sir?
Good.
Please state your name and address, please.
Mike Stanish, 26th Dogwood Road.
Thank you.
I just want to let you guys know, we are doing the fire truck stand-out run on December 17th.
Okay.
Usually, 10 o'clock in the morning, we start. So, if you look around on Facebook, we'll post the route usually and the roads we're starting at, so...
So, you're going to do all three companies are doing?
Just District One.
Just District?
I'm not sure what company two and three are doing.
Gotcha.
Ours is definitely December 17th, usually starting around 10 o'clock in the morning.
Okay, and you'll post that on Facebook?
And they'll post on Facebook the route, usually.
Right. We really appreciate that. Does any... If you can voice the, you know, to the other companies, that we'd love to see that's happening on that end as well?
Yeah. Usually on Facebook, I know they sometimes post it, but we just found out the other day, so ours is going to be December 17th.
That's awesome. Kids love it. I know my kid loves it, so thank you for doing that.
Thank you.
Thanks for the update. Happy holidays. Okay. Any other citizen's statements, petitions, or correspondence? Seeing none, I'll move on to Item Eleven, Resignations and Appointments. Item A, Appointment of Barry Ponder, Republican, to Planning and Zoning Commission as an alternate to fill vacancy position, term to expire 5/31/25. I'll accept a motion?
I'll make a motion for the appointment of Barry Ponder to Planning and Zoning Commission as an alternate to fill a currently vacant position, with the term to expire 5/31/25.
Second.
Second. I have a motion. Motion by Counselor Paldino, seconded by Deputy Mayor Sampaño. Any discussion? Seeing none? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Stained? Thank you, and thank you, Mr. Ponder, for your time and efforts. On to Item Twelve, Unfinished Business, seeing none. Moving on to Item Thirteen, New Business Discussion.
Mr. Mayor, I would just like to make a motion to amend the agenda.
Yes, ma'am.
To add Item 13C for the approval of the sale of alcohol at the Poco Fest, August 4th through the 6th, 2023.
I'll second that.
Fourth and sixth.
Yep. Okay. Motion to add, to amend the agenda by Counselor Vignali, seconded by Counselor Paldino. Any discussion?
Is it beer and wine and alcohol, or is...
Well, we're going to discuss that when we get to that. This was just to make the motion to amend the agenda.
This is just a motion to amend the agenda. We'll talk about it at the...
Okay. Seeing any other discussion? Seeing none? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Stained? Thank you very much. All right, on to Item A, Quarterly Report from Stephanie Malkin and the Animal Control.
Good evening. There's a lot of new faces since I was last here, so I just wanted to start and introduce myself. I'm Stephanie Malkin. I'm obviously a resident of North Branford. I work full-time as a high school psychologist in Rocky Hill. My husband's a fireman in Fairfield, and I have a daughter who's a sixth grader at NBIS. I've been the North Branford representative on the Dan Cosgrove Animal Shelter Commission since 2016. Currently, we are operating at full capacity. Animal control officers are on call 24/7. As most of you know, we are building a new facility, so right now, we are operating out of the old Canoe Brook Senior Center in Branford. We've got volunteers and the animals there. We have rent... We're renting kennels from Guilford. We're housing some dogs at Canoe Brook, but some of the dogs that we can't have there in emergency situations, we are using the Guilford Animal Control and renting their kennels. We are still operating our pet pantry, where we are offering the residents of Branford and North Branford access to pet food if they need it. We have also helped, especially in the past month, several residents of North Branford out with extraordinary medical expenses for their pets, veterinary expenses, spay, neutering, vaccinations, that kind of thing. So, that's something that we've been doing all along. Our new shelter is going to be open to the public. We're aiming for a start date of January. There's a few things with the supply chain and kennel doors that we're just finishing up right now. It's a beautiful facility. We welcome anybody who would like to go on a walk-around or a tour ahead of time before it opens to the public. You're more than welcome. You can reach out to me, or Laura Verben, the director, or Jamie Cosgrove. We'd be happy to have you. And I think that's pretty much it, unless there's any questions.
No, I appreciate it.
I just have one question.
Sure.
That the pet pantry, that's a really great idea. How would people, if they wanted to donate to that, how would they... Is there... Can they do that online? How would they do that?
So, you could either do it on... We have an Amazon wishlist, so based on what people need most frequently, so they can go to the Amazon wishlist and donate, or if they just want to pick things up at the store and say it's for the pet pantry, you can drop them off at the shelter anytime that the shelter's open. It's open to the public.
That's fantastic.
Can you guys maybe put something to that effect? Because I don't know about Amazon wishlist.
Yep.
My wife takes care of it.
Yep. That's usually what happens.
And I just come home and take the packages off the front stoop and bring them in.
Yeah.
But if you could, if you could do something like that and just explain what the wishlist is and...
Yep, absolutely.
I'd like to see that supported.
We post it intermittently on Facebook, but we could certainly do it again, just so that people know what we're looking for.
Yeah, that'd be great. That's a great idea.
Yeah, so we've been doing that, and during COVID, we also did... We delivered food and bought food, and for the residents of Branford and North Branford, human, the humans, not just the animals. So, we did grocery shopping, the staff and volunteers pretty frequently. So, we take care of the humans and we take care of the animals, so... So we take care of the humans and we take care of the animals, so, yeah, but we'll definitely get that up there.
Yeah, great. Thank you, appreciate it.
You're welcome.
Any way you can get it into the Kentucky Times? Just an article, something?
About the pet pantry?
Anything.
Sure.
Anything that you do, try to get with Big Frank?
Yeah.
Get it in there.
Yep, absolutely.
Everybody reads it.
Yep, absolutely. Yeah, and we're really excited for the new shelter to open too, because we do have so much more in terms of room and availability. We're going to have a lot of educational programs for kids. Reading to the animals is coming back. We'll have speakers coming in, just a lot more for the community, not just the kids, the adults, and, you know, hopefully we'll get our volunteer base back up. And before COVID, we were averaging 10,000 to 12,000 visitors a year. So with this new facility, it's state of the art, we have people all over the country reaching out to ask us about it already. So we anticipate that it's going to be a huge draw to the shoreline for people that want to come and visit.
Well, we appreciate the service they provide us.
Thank you. Thank you, we appreciate your support.
Mr. Downs, I just had a.
The chart showing the animals, and it shows, I noticed the second line shows dogs.
Mm-hmm.
And it's got July, August, September, October. No dogs from North Branford went there for that entire time?
Um, so, let me see if it's, it's kind of hard to, so right now, remember, we haven't taken, we don't have our kennels, so we haven't had, to dogs to come into the kennel would be probably surrendered or that we would have to take custody of them. So the animal control officers are still going out on dog calls, barking, roaming, that kind of thing. So looks like carry, so the first, the second line is, would be the carryover dogs from prior to July 22, because this starts with the fiscal year of July 22, impounded cats and then, so dogs, there was one in August, one in September, and one in October.
So for three months, there was only three dogs total impounded there?
That were, that were impounded, yes. So this doesn't include, like I said, dogs that are found roaming and then the owners come to get them or that kind of, these are dogs that maybe possibly were surrendered. We have not typically, our, if you look back historically, the number of dogs on these lists is considerably higher, but we've had to be very careful with what we're taking in because we don't have the space right now. That will change drastically, you know, when it, when it goes up. The other piece is, we have dogs that we've taken custody of that aren't necessarily in the kennel, that have gone to foster care or who have been placed. We had a dog from North Branford that unfortunately ate a thing of Gorilla Glue, almost died.
Stick situation.
The family, you know, didn't have the means, they were going through a tough time, and so we paid for the surgery for that dog and ended up spaying and neutering their additional pets and vaccinating. So that dog is not included on that, that dog's not impounded. It was relinquished to us and then put into a foster home. So it's not really indicative of how many dogs we've dealt with, it's just the amount of dogs that were surrendered to the kennel from North Branford.
Thank you.
So Mike, we had a last minute suggestion from a concerned citizen.
Okay.
That maybe we should put on our new website, a link to the donations on our new website.
Great idea.
Great suggestion, Michelle.
Thank you.
It was going to remain a mystery to me. He was making a suggestion.
Thank you, that would be great. We're really lucky.
I think when we have the new site set up, there'll be a whole suite available to.
That's great.
Yeah, that's great. I just wanted to point out one last thing, because I thought this was actually an awesome statistic. So of the 1,350 people and organizations that donated to the new shelter, 60% of those donations came from Branford and North Branford.
Wow.
So I thought that was really awesome. So I don't know the difference between Branford and North Branford, but we have a lot of support in the community, and we're really grateful for that.
That's great.
Yeah.
We appreciate your time.
Thank you, appreciate it.
Thank you for that as well. Okay. Appreciate that. Onto approval, item B, approval of Finance Subcommittee 2023 meeting schedule.
So moved as presented.
Second. All right, motion by Councilor Gilany, seconded by Deputy Mayor Zampano. Any discussion? Seeing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Stained? All right, thank you. And then on to item C, approval of the sale of alcohol for the Poco 2023 August.
Fourth through the sixth.
Fourth through sixth event?
So this, this started a few years ago when we started a beer and wine tasting, and because it's on town property, the town council has to give approval for the sale of, and it's just beer and wine, it's not alcohol. And this is for the purpose so that we can apply for the permit with the state. And then it also is subject to approval by the local chief of police also. But we need it now so that we can start planning. Last year, we did have it, it was approved by the council, it didn't pan out, so we did not have anything, but it's just part of the planning process to get the approval so we can move ahead with it.
Okay.
Rose, is this going to be something run by the Poco Committee, or are we going to invite in like our local vendors to represent their own product?
We are in the process of putting that together as to how that's going to look. We've had a number of inquiries, but before we can do anything permanently, we have to apply for the permit so that we know that we have it and then we can go forward with it.
How, how would it work?
That's all part of the process as to what, in the past, when we did a beer and wine tasting, there were tickets that were sold.
Grand.
I think it was like $25. There were vendors inside the tent, wineries and beer, local, you know, breweries, that type of thing. And people, they had, we had two tastings, I believe, two different times that people came in, they bought the tickets ahead of time. We did have, we have people at the door that check IDs, you know, it's like a bouncer that is on site the whole time. It's all coordinated through the police department. So we don't know exactly how it's going to look for this year. We have found this past year, when we were going to do the same type of thing, beer and wine tasting, a lot of the local breweries and wineries, due to staffing shortages, just could not commit to that type of an event. Things may change by next year in regards to that, so we're just, we don't have a definite as to what it will look like.
Yeah, there's different, different fairs locally, like Guilford does a beer tent, I think they, a couple of years back, it was there, they did, at Thimble do it, and they had, you know, there's obviously a max whether you can get, you can't go there and get, you know, fleeced, you can have, you know, a couple of tickets and have a couple beers, and you stay in that, that area only. Or there's what, like the Durham Fair does, which is similar to what we did, they brought, they bring in various, you know, Connecticut wineries, and I believe they did beer as well at one point, and they do a true tasting, you know, to, you know, land a, almost like a, a very abridged flight, and you get to do so many, so many of the, you can choose the vineyards, like five vineyards you can go through.
So what are the risk and exposure, possible exposure to the town, if any?
I mean, I think that's more, not necessarily, they'll bring that to us when they actually figure out what, what the event is. We're more so allowing them to explore the event. Am I correct in saying that?
So we need?
Well, I'm glad Steve, come on up.
Basically, what we need is, we need you guys to support this, at least tentatively. We have to go out to quote, requesting quotes for tents, so that's important, whether it's the electrical bid for electricians, golf carts, trailers, all this predicated on wherever you guys decide. So we haven't even had any solid conversations about what we're looking for with this. Last year, we just pulled the plug, even though you guys embraced it and the police chief embraced it. So we haven't gotten that far. This is the first step, so at least we know what size tent we possibly may need, tables, chairs, et cetera.
Okay. Plus you need, Rose, you need our, I'm sorry, you need our approval in order to apply for the permit too.
Correct. Correct, that's the, that's.
So that's to get the ball rolling.
That's the purpose.
Yep.
Well, that's not what the motion says. The motion says for the sale of alcohol, it doesn't say to apply.
The state of Connecticut doesn't differentiate whether it's, you're giving it out, you're going to have a keg party or whatever, it's the same permit.
Just so, just so you know, you need specifics on what you're going to do before you apply for the permit?
Right. But we need approval from the council so we can apply and put the.
Just throwing it out there.
Yeah, application together.
And so is it just one vendor that runs it, or you have separate vendors, like three or four different tents or?
No, it's just one tent. There would be, there could be a variety of vendors under that one tent, that one.
Oh, okay, okay.
It's a contained area.
It's a testing, right?
We don't know if it's going to be a tasting or like a beer tent. That's what we are exploring.
So it's just beer and wine, no hardware security?
Correct, correct.
We, we approve this every year too, and like I said, they've sometimes used it, sometimes have it, it depends on what, you know.
We did it last year.
No, we didn't because.
We didn't approve it?
They pulled the plug.
We approved it, but we ended up not having it.
We approved it, but you didn't do it.
We didn't have people that wanted to do it.
Basically, the, real quick reason why we pulled it last year is, every brewery that we spoke to or vineyard basically said, we're doing a tasting, you can't just have someone you just hired last week. You need to know substance and how it was made and what's in it. So they just felt that they would rather have their resources at their own establishment. So we didn't want to hold it foolish, didn't want to hold it foolish, we just pulled the plug on it.
All right, so this is a brewery type of thing, not like bottled Budweiser or?
Oh, yes. We're not exactly sure yet.
Okay.
We don't have the exact format.
I don't think it's a keg park.
So what we're doing, so what we're doing is, you're looking for a commitment or approval
to get the permit?
Correct, to apply for the permit.
To apply for the permit. However, what, what the chief of police just said, in order to apply for the permit, you have to have specifics. So my, I guess my question would be, would the council have to approve the specifics or are we just approving the permit and letting it go?
In the past, you just approved so that we could apply for the permit. You didn't approve the specifics.
Right, that's what I'm asking, are we, are we?
Yeah, well, who does the application?
The, the Poco Fest Committee.
The committee.
You, Steve?
Yeah, so in the, in the past, fortunately, we're, we have a very wonderful town attorney that has been working with us trying to get that liability off of one single individual, so.
Strictly beer and wine. Bryce, you want to?
Yes.
You want to? I'm okay with it.
I'm not going to interfere with the Poco King.
Okay.
Sorry, man. Any other discussion?
Is it, is it, is it worth it and will it make the Poco Fest better? Is it worth, is it worth the hassle and the, and going through all the extra setup and all the extra, is it going to make the Poco better?
So the.
Is it worth the hassle?
Yes, because the first time, we only did it for one day, it was a Sunday, this just gives us the option, depending on where we're going to shift. We have some fantastic ideas that, there seems to be a trend, I was at every fair and festival this year, in the state of Connecticut, we're the only ones that they have anything like this, but we're also the first. We kind of start the whole season. Year one, we made money. Year two, there's a little lack of communication, but we still made some money. Year three of this event, we, we took it back out because COVID started. So two years, no COVID, and last year seemed like there was just personnel issue. So it hasn't been a loss yet. And you're getting a different crowd. This isn't, how do I explain it? I, I hope I'm representing people that drink craft beer, but craft beer drinkers aren't the go up and get absolutely wasted crowd. So it's a different type of crowd that enjoys this type of beer.
I think too, I think too.
Personally, I don't, but.
I think too.
I'm a craft, I'm, I'm part of that crowd, I'm just wondering, is it, is it worth it for us as the town to, to take that?
I think, if I may, well, I, I think, for me, I look at it a little bit differently, right? We talk about agro-terrorism here, we talk about supporting businesses and stuff like that. I would like to have it be part of the event so that we could extend it to our business partners in the community, so that they can come in, should they want to, and showcase their, their products. A hundred percent. And then try to get more people to come to their establishments on a regular basis, so. And body tag. If we break even on it.
Yeah.
I'm not really concerned about that, if it gives them an opportunity to come in and showcase their product.
Steve, I have a question.
Body tag.
You're familiar with this, is there a limit on, about how many glasses or bottles or whatever you can purchase or how, you know how it works?
When we did it in the past, we had upwards of 20 different beer selections and/or wine and hard, like an apple cider. And there's a certain quantity you can reach, and when we did it in those years, that was it. So even though there were 20, you're not sampling 20 different types of beer. So you could call like a flight or other things, you, we had a ticket, you get, the vendor punches the ticket and you move to the next.
Okay.
And then you, you're allotted a time, so you're not, when we did it that way, you weren't walking in and out, carrying it around the grounds.
Yeah, it would not be allowed to be out of that area. You cannot, some places do, some fairs do allow you to walk with.
Oh, you mean go into the tank, get your beer, and then walk around the grounds?
Right. That's not what we're looking to do.
Oh, so they.
It's a contained area.
You have to drink in the tank?
Correct. Correct.
Which is, I think, what I've seen most of the time. I don't know many that you can walk around freely with it, but.
It's not.
Not, not very common.
Yeah, we're not.
Usually it's a, it's a perimeter.
Okay.
All right, any other discussion? All right, seeing none. All in favor? Oh, we didn't get. Oh, we didn't get. Oh, I'm sorry, I thought we had the discussion.
We didn't have a motion. Okay, so I'd like to make a motion.
Thank you.
For town council approval for the sale of beer and wine at the Poco Festival on town property, August 4th through the 6th, 2023.
Second. I'm sorry, I didn't know where you said.
I said second.
Thank you, I couldn't hear what it was. A motion by Councilor Gilany, seconded by Councilor Abelson. Any discussion, further discussion?
No.
Seeing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Stained? Thank you. All right, on to item 14, citizen statements and petitions. Do we have any? Seeing none. Moving on to item 15, executive session. We're, item A, discussion of police chief regarding matters concerning security strategy and deployment of police personnel. In that, we will ask the police chief, deputy police chief, town manager, town attorney, anyone else that needs to be on that? That's pretty much it.
David wants to get in on it.
David, are you, is Dave still here?
He's out in the hallway.
You can't hear him?
He's on the other world.
Yeah.